Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, Tuesday, March 12th. I'll call the meeting to order. And roll call, starting on the left.
Frank Mills.
Bart Hassel.
June Gagnon.
John Meyer.
Carla Stardens.
Dan Kamskovich.
Ryan Bray.
Eddie O'Neal.
Melissa Brant.
Thank you. All right, we do have a forum, and all members are present, so there are no alternates to appoint tonight. Starting with public hearing, item A 24-5 SP of Jane Bazza, requesting a modification of approved earth excavation permit 23-21 SP to adjust hours of operation on property located at Zero Snake Meadow Road, assessors map 28, block 122, lots 13 and 14, RA 6D zoning district. Do we have someone to speak for the applicant?
I guess that'll be me. I thought the Bowser's would be here. My name's Stuart Norman Jr., I represent the Bowser's. Long story short, they were looking to have their application renewed. Their prior application went from 7:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. Monday through Saturday. Through some misunderstanding, your board approved it for a shorter period of time in one last day. They're looking to have it be what it had always been, 7:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. Monday through Saturday. And that's really where we're at. Thank you. Do you have any questions?
I do, actually, because under the special permit, earth excavation, they're five-year permits, so why was this application not brought back in 2022 at the end of the five-year term?
The only reason I can give you is what my clients told me. They've contacted a surveying firm, and it took a whole lot longer than they thought it was going to take to get it determined.
Okay. Now-
To get the plan done, and they just-
Okay. Now, normally, we'd have a map of the property with the grading and the progression and the phases, so why is that information not for this application tonight?
Oh, okay.
This is a modification of just the hours. So nothing is- The order approved, the-
The application is expired.
No, no, no.
So wouldn't they have to come back by your mark for-
We approved it the last month or the month before. Yeah, two months ago, they approved it. They're simply coming back for a modification to the hours.
Okay. So they did come back to five, didn't they?
Yes, and that was approved.
Okay. So there was, at our, two months ago, the understanding was the hours were not in progress?
Correct, because initially, starting back in 2001, it was 9:00 to 5:00, Monday through Friday. And then in 2017, on the renewal, it was changed to Monday through Saturday, 7 to 6. Mr. Bowser doesn't work a full day. He goes out for a couple hours here and there. So it wasn't well documented in the 2017 renewal that the hours were changed. The only place it was found is in the notes of the site plan, which I did not study that closely. So we thought it was the old hours that we set it to. And then under the review, we found out that it was modified in 2017, but it was a renewal back then.
How bad?
We have received no complaints from the hours of operation.
Any other questions from board members? This is a public hearing, so if there's anybody in the audience with a comment or a question on this application, this is your opportunity. Any other comments or questions?
I have a motion to close public hearing.
I have a motion to close public hearing by Frank.
I'll second that.
I have a second by June. All in favor of closing the public hearing?
Aye.
Any opposed? Public hearing is closed. Moving on to item B, 24-6 SP of Scott Tetro, requesting a special permit for construction of a 30-by-50 metal garage for property at 354 Kate Downing Road, assessors map 18, block 12, lot 19, RA 6D zoning district. Do we have someone to speak for the applicant?
Personal hobby use? Yes.
All right, thank you. This is a public hearing, so if there's anyone in the audience with a comment or question on this application, this is your opportunity. Any comments or questions from board members? And any comments or questions from staff? All right, hearing and seeing none, I'll entertain a motion on the public hearing.
So moved.
To-
Close.
Close. Thank you. I have a motion by Bart to close, and a second by June. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Public hearing is closed. Moving on to the regular meeting, I'll call the regular meeting to order. Additions, corrections to the agenda, we do have one item to add, and that is item D under new business, and that is 24-9 SP of the Town of Plainfield, so I'll entertain a motion to add that to the agenda.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by June, and a second by John to add under new business, item D. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, item is added. Moving on to citizen participation, this is opportunity for the public to address the board on something that was not a public hearing. Hearing and seeing none. Moving on to the unfinished old business, item C, and actually, should that be, should that be item A, okay? Under old business? Okay. So item A, 24-5 SP of Jane Bazza, requesting a modification of approved earth excavation permit 23-21 SP to adjust hours of operation on property located at Zero Snake Meadow Road, assessors map 28, block 122, lots 13 and 14, RA 6D zoning district. Do we have items for discussion from the board? I would just note that 7 to 6 would be not in line with what the commission has done recently with gravel operations.
And that's on Saturdays.
Yeah. It includes Saturday as well, Monday to Saturday, 7 to 6.
Right.
So we've traditionally held the Saturday till noon time, at least.
I would just point that out.
So I'd want to keep in line with what this board has done recently.
In the winter, you got to run it.
So minimally, I would want to see the hours stop at noon on Saturday to be consistent with other applications that we've approved. Does anyone else have any item of discussion on the hours?
I agree with you.
Okay.
How do the board deal with the effective, whatever it is? Is that kind of-
I might say-
Yeah.
Should this not have been addressed when we approved it? We're kind of going backwards now, and not giving-
Correct. It's asking-
Yeah, trying to adjust.
It's asking for a correction. This is asking for a correction, right?
Simply to return to what 2017 hours were.
Right. But the board can choose to keep the other hours.
They can.
Or modify and do something in between.
Okay.
Yeah, so we have flexibility. So the-
Doesn't seem fair, but okay.
So the modification is being requested because they're being held to the 9 to 5. Isn't that right, Ben?
Correct, that was the approval.
Yeah.
Which seemed, from what I understood from reading, that was a mistake on our part, I guess.
How do you get that sense from the meetings, though?
But that's the dispute, though.
Yeah, you get that sense from the minutes. The application was approved with the 9 to 5. It was only found in a drawing, correct, Ron?
Right.
The site plan, yes. The notes of the site plan for 2017 have the change of hours. Right.
So this is trying to resolve a discrepancy.
Okay. And they've been 9 to 5 since 2001, when the first permit was issued for this pit? 2001 to 2017, yes, they've been 9 to 5. So 16 years, they went 9 to 5, 2017, they went longer hours, pushing into a Saturday. It stayed at 9 to 5 because of what we believe is a clerical issue, so they're trying to get back to what they want in 2017, not what they had for 16 years. Right, and I think that has to do with- Right. There's been a change in the operation hours conducted. It's a one-person operation, working sprout hours here and there. But the special permit goes with-
If anyone's going to-
It goes with only a- Correct.
I was going to say, if anyone's going to object to it, this was their day to be here to make a comment on it.
Yeah, I am. I am.
The public hearing was, has been closed.
I'm afraid you're a little late.
Yeah, sorry.
Just for the record, this is not a public hearing at all.
Yeah, that's true.
That is Mr. Bowser.
Okay.
What he objects to is the change in hours from two months ago, when we made the application.
I just said-
Yeah, you want 0700 to 1800.
That's what we had last time we've had that, but I would say every 10 years.
Okay, so we are in the deliberations stage, so we have to determine-
Thank you.
-what we're going to do at this point. So the options on the table are to approve the requested Monday to Saturday, 7:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., to keep the previous application hours, which were Monday to Friday, 9 to 5, or we have the discretion to modify or change something that would be kind of compromising in the middle. The board have a leanings of which direction they want to go?
I would like to make a motion to approve it as requested.
Okay, so I have a motion by Frank to approve as requested, which is Monday to Saturday, 7:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. Do I have a second on that motion?
I'll second.
So I have a motion, a second by June, to approve Monday to Saturday, 7:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay. I'm going to call a roll call, though, since it is separate. Frank Mills?
Yea.
Bart Hassel?
Yea.
June Gagnon?
Yea.
John Meyer?
Yea.
Carla Stardens? Nay. So let the record reflect that it was a 3 to 2 vote to approve the modified hours of Monday to Saturday, 7:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. Okay. Moving on to item B, so she could fix that in a minute. 24-6 SP of Scott Tetro, requesting a special permit for construction of a 30-by-50 metal garage for property at 354 Kate Downing Road, assessors map 18, block 12, lot 19, RA 6D zoning district. Do we have discussion on the application? I think the only note that staff had made was to just specify that the garage shall be used for residential storage associated with primary residence, which the applicant did state on the record during the public hearing.
And that is in our RA 6D zoning district.
Correct. Correct.
I make a motion.
With the condition as read?
Yes.
Okay, I have a motion by John to approve with the condition as read.
I'll second that.
I have a second by June. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Application is approved with that condition. Thank you. Moving on to new business, item A, 24-7 SP of Ben Stone, requesting a special permit for a 2,400-square-foot detached garage with a 720-square-foot workshop on property located at 239 Musa Pond Road, assessors map 22, block 88, lot 19, RA 6D zoning district. This is a special permit, so this does require a public hearing.
We've scheduled a public hearing for the date of April 9, 2024.
Okay. I have a motion by Bart. I have a second by Frank. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, scheduled public hearing in April. Item B, 24-8 SP of Whit Barlow, requesting a special permit for Section 7.1A regulations to construct a 967-square-foot garage on property located at 470 Plainfield Pike, assessors map 32, block 58, lot 5, RA 6D zoning district. This is also a special permit that will require a public hearing.
I'll make a motion to schedule a public hearing for April 9.
I have a motion by June, scheduled public hearing April 9.
I'll second that.
I have a second by John. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, public hearing is scheduled for April 9. Moving on to item C, 24-I, or is that 1, SP, Plainfield Pike LLC, requesting a site plan review for construction of a 1,253,914-square-foot commercial warehouse and associated parking and drainage on property located at 143-151 Plainfield Pike Road, assessors map 25, block 36, lots 32, 32A, 33, and 68, industrial 1 and industrial 2 zoning districts. Do we have someone to speak for the applicant?
Yes.
Alana.
Good evening. I'm Tony Farrow. I'm the construction manager of Uline, ahead of this project. This project was originally approved under Skanel for a warehouse building. We have purchased property from Skanel and have intended to expand it for growing business and to better service the community in the surrounding areas in this Connecticut community and market. Uline is a company based on growth. We have now over 40 years of growth in our business. We started in 1980, but with our mission statement, something that we want to bring to this community, because I think it's important, is Uline is very much about speed, our passion, and our operational excellence, which we would like to bring to the community here to better service our customers across the country. Like I stated, the company was founded in the early 80s by Dick and Liz Uline in their basement. They started with one product and have grown it to a now company that has 4,500 different products, services not only the entire U.S., but Canada and Mexico. One of the things that we try to do as a company is if you order by 6:00 p.m., it's delivered the next day. Our issue right now is in the New England market. We cannot service it properly, Pennsylvania. So we've targeted the Town of Plainfield to help service our customers and live up to our promise.
Go back one more, please.
Hey, you can see our growth across the country and our service right now. This is how we've been able to satisfy our customers by continually to put warehouses in different communities. Where we do join different communities, we have a major impact not only on the jobs we provide, our building as a whole, and everything else that we bring to the community. Uline is founded on servicing the customer. Next one forward. And we have unparalleled customer service. Our customer service starts with our phone service call centers, where typically, the phone doesn't even ring. We answer typically faster than 911 in servicing our customers. Most of our customers are long-term customers. As you can see in our responses from different customers, some of them have been with us for over 20 years, still giving us positive feedback. We have not dropped our service or commitment to our customer in any of the 40 years. What we are bringing to the community, and long-term, is about 400 full-time positions with our warehouse. Day one, we'll have about 200 positions, with 170 of them being filled local. We do bring in some experienced staff from other buildings as our operation is unique, and this helps train the local staff. We bring good-paying jobs with full benefits, tuition reimbursement, full medical, and once we're here, we do establish ourselves as a community partner. We do work with local charities, local communities, in trying to get this to be part of the growth of Uline. Why is Uline a good fit for Plainfield? Uline is an $11 billion company with zero debt. We don't have the fluctuations of other companies, where as interest rates fluctuate, they might have to dial back their business. Uline has zero debt, so this will never impact the growth of our building or our operations within the town. Other things that we are doing with-
Just for a moment.
Sure.
I understand you want to advertise your company to us, but this use is by right. So the use is already approved for the space.
Okay.
So what we need to review is your request to increase what's been previously approved. So I'm not sure how long your presentation was, but-
That's it.
Okay, because I want to see the plans, and I want to see the adjustment, and so I just want to make sure, you know, that there's no misunderstanding, that your use is by right.
Right.
You know, it's already been approved, so we're here today to look-
Alan Schmitz, who will come up just next-
All right, excellent. And do we have copies of the plans, Ron?
We do. I wasn't anticipating a full proposal or full demonstration tonight-
Yep.
Because they are still waiting on wetlands approval.
And wetlands could have impact on what?
Yeah, so the purpose of tonight is to run through it quickly, so that if the commission has any questions, things can be addressed next month.
Understood. So with that in mind, I would, I would please request that you not do a full presentation, especially given there's information that wetlands may be modified or changing, which would also impact what we do. So if you could briefly overview the plans that we're reviewing, that would be greatly appreciated, so we can make sure board members see what we are here to review tonight.
My name is John Schmitz. I'm a civil engineering project manager with a big old company in Connecticut. So I'm just going to briefly walk you through a couple of slides. So the slide here is a decidedly mapped of the site. Familiarize yourself with it. The site, don't worry yourself, here, north is to the left, Plainfield Pike going up, north and south, going east and west, like up and down, the left side is a page. The site is approximately 140 acres today, mostly undeveloped in the southerly portion and the east and west. You do see an area in the central portion of the property, mostly off of Plainfield Pike that's already disturbed, there's current mining operations going on there for years. And so the southern portion, again, is developed. We are zoned, as you know, industrial zone 1 and 2. We're surrounded to the west by another plenty of one zone, and then to the top, east, south, and partially to the west, also by residential, 360 zones. We charge by the same family houses, for the most part. To the next slide. So this is a, there's a quick slide to show you the comparison of why you're here and what we saw before. So what you see in red highlights what was approved previously for Skanel, our current approvals that we have for the Skanel building, which was, is a 1 million square foot warehouse. Whereas this proposal is for a 1.25 square million, 1.25 million square foot warehouse. And as you see, that's in blue. The building is more or less in the same orientation in the, in the site that's located in the local property. Roughly about the same width, but it is longer. Building, new building is approximately 2,000 feet long, and give or take 350 feet longer than the previous building. We push a little closer to the road in the north, and we push a little further out to the south at the other end of the building. For the most part, I'm trying to maintain that width. And similarly, this project would have two driveways on access to property from, from Plainfield Pike. There'd be a westerly driveway, an easterly driveway. There'd be first, full circulation around the entire site, receiving on the westerly side, shipping on the northerly side, I'm sorry, on the easterly side. So this is a, a site plan, kind of schematic, showing you overall. If you looked in, if you had the packet, SP 1, just showing you overall what we propose. So again, access with two driveways off of Plainfield Pike. Small office area on the northerly end of the building, that's that full projection you see off the front of the building. Small parking area just to the front of that, a larger parking lot just to the west of the site, that's for employees to use, and then another employee lot at the very south end of the building. Again, again, loading for trucks, docks are along both sides of the building, east and west, and also in those truckport areas, there are parking areas for trailer storage in the meantime. You will note, just kind of worry yourself, around the building, around the site, there's different colors, so the, I guess, army green, the color would be wetlands. We have wetlands along, I know the board doesn't review that, but we do have wetlands along the easterly part of the site, on the south, and then towards the southeast corner. The blue does represent a small pond that's there currently. The green represents forest areas. Wetlands themselves are forested, for the most part. The green, dark green color represents forest areas, and then the light, obviously, we propose grassland. And right now, the way the project lays out, we comply with all the bulk standards of regulations with regards to zoning and those parking. The plans we provide for landscaping, lighting, rubbish control, site utilities, we're going to be extending various utilities to the project site, including water and sewer. We have electric and other utilities that are available, too, so I'm just working through that now. I think that's pretty much a quick rundown of the site itself. You have, again, just by way of background, Skanel project's already approved, went through not only local approvals, but also received approved approvals from OSTA, same traffic issue. We have a DEP for a general permit discharge, which is currently in place. Those permits will all be modified for the larger building, so we have to go back to OSTA to update that certificate, and originate that application to keep them for larger building track trips. And then, again, depending with DEP, the larger site disturbance will incur a modification by credit as well. So we're in, we're in one of the four steps for, are made currently. Yeah, that's, and I'm going to turn things over to Mark, who's just going to briefly go and walk you through some of the-
I was going to say, would the board like to see anything further about the landscaping around?
So given no action can be taken tonight, because we need wetlands to review, and wetlands can make modifications, it's up to the board if you want to continue or allow them to continue their presentation, or have them present fully next month after the wetlands approval has been.
I'm okay with it, they're here. I'll hear them.
We're coming back.
So essentially, they would present the full plans next month.
Hopefully, it's a little more jazzier.
I agree, because I'd like to know more about the lighting and everything, maybe it's better than-
For the full presentation, when we have plans in front of us that can be looked at in detail, because I prefer having plans, because my eyes, they're smart back there.
I know, I need the nine in the fire.
So I just want to make sure, Carl, that if we're going to kind of table their presentation and make sure we allocate appropriate time in each agenda for them, that they're given a chance to give their speed, their speed on the show.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
And giving it a say over.
Yeah. There's no time limits to these meetings.
I simply can't understand the trepidation of being given one shot at the apple, they want to make sure that you give the full presentation on behalf of them.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely.
I'll make a motion to table it until next-
Continue.
Continue it. April 1.
Okay, I have a motion to continue to April 9?
Second.
I have a second by Bart. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Continue to next month, we'll see you then. Thank you. And Ryan, am I correct, the town engineer will review these plans, and we have comments for our-
So the town engineer does have the plans, yes.
Great, okay, perfect. And would we get those prior to the meeting?
Yes.
Excellent. All right, thank you. All right. Moving on to item D, which is Town of Plainfield, and this is a special permit, so that also means a public hearing. So I would entertain a motion to schedule a public hearing.
I have a motion to schedule a public hearing.
Okay. I have a motion to schedule a public hearing April 9. I have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Public hearing is scheduled. All right, moving on to reviewing and acting in the minutes for the February 21st meeting. Were there any changes or modifications, corrections to the minutes?
I did notice that Kathy Metzmer, who's there, so she's not, it says alternate presence.
Yep, correct.
Dan and Kathy were not listed. And also, I noted, under C on page 3, John Meyer, it was Bart Hassel.
Right, so John can't make the, so I made the motion and John made the second, so I think I appreciate it.
Got it.
And that was it. That's what I said.
Okay. So hearing, no other modifications or changes?
A motion to approve the minutes.
With the modifications?
Change modifications.
All right, so I have a motion to approve with those modifications.
Second.
Second by Bart. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Minutes are approved. Moving on to correspondence.
We have no correspondence.
No correspondence. A report from zoning enforcement.
I have the party on my report to you. If you have any questions, you can go ahead.
Do we have court case that has a date in it?
So it looks as though that case is going to be resolved, we have a proposed stipulation agreement.
Okay.
And it looks like that's going to be signed, which will avoid court if it is in fact signed.
So if we need that update, will we make sure that executive session is on the April agenda, so that we can discuss if there's anything that's- so that we'll discuss if there is anything that's not being adjusted with that? Thank you, much appreciated. A report from planning department.
The Dow Road bridge replacement is moving forward. Tree work, tree cutting for the power lines and associated work should be going forth this, end of this month. Inter-oil redevelopment is still on track with progress of that. Musa Valley Trail, that is under construction. Lathar Road sidewalks, we have been approved for additional funding. I'm sorry, Lathar Road sidewalks. DOT changed their plan for the lights over there. They wanted to change some things with the traffic lights, and because of that, we had to make modifications, and we're waiting on DOT's comments for those modifications. High school annex property, we do have funding to put up a pavilion and make other improvements. We have not done anything with that so far, getting plans together. Shepherd Hill sidewalks, phase one B, so Shepherd Hill, phase one A stopped at Charlotte Drive, from Shepherd Hill School down to Charlotte Drive, and we now have funding for Charlotte Drive 12 and possibly a little extra to weigh in on how much money it costs. We will follow that with the issue.
So under other, we had our discussion of gravel operations. It was not on the agenda last month, but at the previous meeting, we had talked about reviewing and revising regulations to possibly address hours of operation, buffer zones, have commission members had opportunity to look at and determine if there are any other areas that they might want to review and revise on those regulations. Did staff have any recommendations of revision on the regulations?
So that's totally within the commission's purview. We have discussed modifications to the hours of operation. Right now, they're pretty expansive with the commission setting the hours, so there's talk of bringing that in a little bit more along the lines of what the commission typically approves. There's also some talk of increasing the setback for property lines. Currently, you can get within, I think, 20 feet.
Yep.
Or 25 feet, and that's a little close, so increasing the buffer possibly.
So the question for tonight is, do you want to move forward with revising these regulations? Because if so, then I would suggest that we have staff extend the moratorium, because the moratorium on gravel operations goes through June 30. In order for us to revise regulations, propose the text amendment, go through the public hearing, it's definitely going to take more than two months to do. So we just have to determine how we want to direct staff. So if we want to revise regulations, I would suggest we ask them to submit the extension of the moratorium to allow the time, so that we can revise the text and go through public hearing process.
I'm a little concerned about finding out exactly what's going on. When you have an operation and in five years it's supposed to maybe be turned into a pond there or something, and those things, there's no accountability. Is there a way to tell if permits says that you have to eventually put a pond or whatever? Return it to natural habitat? Is there a way to follow up with these operations?
So like an enforcement schedule of proposals? Actually, are working on that currently. We have started visiting all the sites, and we are, spreadsheet, we're on it. So that would be part of the regulation, then, that there would be a schedule that the zoning enforcement would be giving reports to the commission on progress of different... Okay, absolutely. All right. All right.
I think the other thing we're talking about, Carla, is the mandating of restoration. I know we've taken it as a, yep, we agree, we should always do that, but it's not actually part of our enforcement. I think the committee, based on that voting base, we think it should just be the backup standard based on votes, right?
And you got a comment, John?
Yeah, I have a concern about certain operations that come in as a site plan review for, let's say, some of it, and end up being very much like, essentially being a gravel. It isn't any regulation whatsoever. And I don't know whether that's something that goes to the subdivision sites or something that goes limitation on amount of excavation that can be done as part of the site development. For, let's say, a single lot. I'm not talking about multiple lots, a single lot. Yeah, if a certain threshold is exceeded, then gravel regulations might apply at least some time.
So Ryan, when we're talking about drafting regulations, we could, we could set thresholds that if, in the event of a, a greeting of a, a property, if it meets a certain threshold of yards or time, that it would be required to come through the gravel law regulations rather than be allowed to operate with no timeframe?
Yes.
Okay. So with that information, and please, Ryan, let me know if I've got the timeframes wrong. So at this point, staff will start working on revising language based on the information that we've given so far. We would continue to review and refine before we propose the text amendment to present to the public. But before we can do any of that, we need to ask staff to submit an application to extend the moratorium, because that moratorium is also subject to a public hearing. Correct?
We could broaden the agenda for next month to, to a six-month moratorium starting in June or July when it expires.
Okay. All right, so if it, if the board is agreeable to directing staff to submit that application on our behalf?
Yes.
Okay. Do you need a formal motion for that, Ryan?
I'm sure.
Okay, so I'll entertain a motion to direct staff to submit an application to extend the moratorium.
I'll make that motion.
I have a motion by June.
I'm sure.
I have a second by John. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? All right, thank you, Ryan. You can proceed with that. And in the meantime, continue to read those regulations. If you have other ideas for revision, have them ready for our next meeting. And seeing no other other, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by June, second by John. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Meeting is adjourned.